...Tibetan Town Council Meeting of Monday, October 28th, 2013 will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Shabbath.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Rodrick.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier is absent at this time.
Okay, the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of regular council meeting on October 15th, 2013, Counselor DiMederos and Lambert abstained, absent. Approval of executive session minutes, October 15th, 2013, Counselor DiMederos and Lambert abstained, absent. Approval of joint workshop minutes, October 17th, 2013, Counselors Aruda, DiMederos, and Lambert abstained, absent. Receipt of the following minutes from the following boards and commissions. Board of Canvases, two. Correspondence received and filed. David Paul requests permission to apply for lifespan grant for AED device at Town Farm referred to Town Administrator and Recreation Commission. Copy of letter from Harbor Commission Chair Bruce Cox to Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District regarding Seapowhat Marsh. Approval of tax assessors' abatements. Chief Thomas Blakely, permission to advertise for position of dispatchers. Scheduling a municipal court judge appointment November 12th, 2013. Request for reappointment by Attorney James A. Donnelly, Jr. Request for appointment by Robert H. Humphrey, Esquire. Authorized advertising ordinance amended public hearing December 9th on sewers and sewage disposal, Section 18-9.6, education program and phased implementation, paragraph three. Is there anything the council wishes to remove?
I'd like to remove three A, the AED device at Town Farm.
Mr. President, I'd like to remove CA 3B.
Anything else to be removed? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the balance of the consent agenda. All those in favor, motion carries. Ms. DiMederos?
I do think it's a good idea to have an AED device anywhere in town, but I would hope that the chief takes the lead on this because AED devices can sometimes be more dangerous than actually worthwhile if the proper people aren't doing it and it has to be...
Right, and there will be training provided.
Okay.
And this is supposedly a real, simple device to use.
It's simple, but you still have to be certified to use it.
Right.
And the Red Cross has certification for it.
And we do intend to have training for the people.
And it also needs to be in a very secure place if there's children around it because it can be very dangerous.
It would be our intent at this point to place it for six months down at Town Farm, okay, and it would be in one of the locked concession stands. And then in the winter, we'd move it to possibly the Castle School or somewhere else where there is a lot of activity.
No, I would assume that the chief would take the lead on it, but it really needs to be in his hands.
Okay, Chief, since you just walked in.
I'm talking about the AED device and how you should take the lead on this.
Absolutely, I agree with the AED as a grant. In the budget, every year, there is an item called the CTC, which is a Community Training Center, which the Firefooters do. We'd be more than glad to make sure all the parks and recreation people are trained to be able to use that.
And I like that sweatshirt.
Why, thank you very much.
Very, very chock. I like it a lot.
You want to stand out?
I want one.
Anything else from the council regarding this issue? I'll entertain a motion on 3A.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor. Okay, Mr. Gerlach.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question. You know, I read with interest this letter from Mr. Cox with an update on some of the results coming in from the URI Watershed Watch Program as it relates to Seapowhat Marsh, in particular, how bacteria levels are particularly high at certain locations that have been tested and kind of some of the thoughts on what the sources of that high bacteria level might be. At the end of the memo, it talks about asking for assistance in approaching a resident in that locale regarding what we might be able to do to mitigate some of the animal runoff there. And I'm just curious as to how we would actually go about that. I didn't know if there was a precedent that might have been set some years back when we were addressing similar concerns with Stafford Pond and the dairy farm in that location, but I'm just curious how we go about engaging that citizen with this.
Mr. Tights?
I mean, if you want to engage citizens, a workshop would be, you know, appropriate or perhaps ask, invite the gentleman, the professor from Brown, who's a member who took the studies, to actually come and report to the council directly would be perhaps a suggestion.
I'm just trying to better understand how we actually take action on some of the data and the results here.
Well, I mean, it's not actually our jurisdiction, that's the problem. It's the DEM jurisdiction dealing with it. So it would be, I don't know that we really have any way that we can take out action other than publicizing it.
Okay. I mean, we could ask for more information and clarification and hold a public hearing on it, but other than that, the jurisdiction lies within DEM.
Right, and, you know, we could obviously try to get, we could, as I read the letter, it was obviously trying to, you know, work with the people to get them to improve it rather than simply have DEM come in to enforce it, which we know we've had our issues with in the past anyway.
Okay. All right. Perhaps there is, I don't know if a copy of this letter was submitted to the DEM or it doesn't look like there's any sort of CC here.
We can request Mr. Cox to see if, you know...
Sure.
Because that would be their purview.
Ms. Mello, could you actually, yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, anything else from the council regarding this issue? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept Consent Agenda 3B.
Second.
All those in favor, carries. Okay, Public Forum and Announcements, Comments, and Questions. Mrs. Pelletier?
I know you're tired of seeing me. However, and I brought that up before, just the availability of information in the town. And sometimes things sort of jog you out of your, into action again. And that was the case on the weekend edition of the Newport Daily News when they addressed the taxes that Sandywood generates. And I'm thinking back onto how this got to be what it is, and I'm not particularly picking just on Sandywood, in generally, you sometimes have questions on how things in town happen. And really, unless you have an immense amount of time and dig for it, it's not really readily available. So I thought maybe, since we do now have a website, that we have a component of the website where you could submit any question about anything that is perplexing to you and within, let's say, a business week, receive an answer by somebody in the town hall that knows that particular answer. And it shouldn't be, the person questioning should not even sign his name, it should be all, no political backbiting or anything like that, just a simple, informative way of dispensing information. And I don't know, should I submit this as a form of presentation in front of you because I guess these forums don't lead to action? So I really just, even that question alone could be answered on the forum. And, you know, when you get to thinking, like, let's say of Sandywood, you wonder, gee, how did it get to be that? And in the beginning, the thing was, well, the artists were supposed to earn a certain amount of their money to be living there on the artistic endeavor. Now, do they have a limit to prove themselves time-wise as an artist and then some other artists can five years later move in and try that? Or how did we ever, as I understood it, it was supposed to have open studios. Who discontinued that? Those are curious questions that some curious people want to know. But there's no, where do you go to get that? Or aren't you supposed to know that?
Mrs. Pelletier?
Yes?
Again, as you know, in this forum, we don't...
No, I know. So how do we get somewhere where we can submit questions that could be answered?
What I would suggest is that you put in a gender item request so that we can openly discuss it.
No, and especially in the development of the town, some people might have questions and very valid ones for whatever reason. And I think that there should be an easy way in this day and age of technology to be able to submit a question and get an answer in a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, so again, I suggest you put a request on the agenda.
On the agenda, exactly.
That way, we can have an open discussion regarding it.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Public hearings and public presentations. We welcome Middletown Town Councilors Richard Adams and Barbara Von Villas. They request appointment of members to Unified High School Exploratory Committee. Before we begin, I'm just going to make just a very short statement. I thank you for coming with this presentation, but again, this idea, this concept should be presented to the school committee. So I would suggest that you contact the chair of the school committee, Mrs. Sally Black.
Who's sitting right behind you.
Who's sitting right there. And, you know, request to go before them. Again, you know, as a council, we welcome anybody to present before us. But again, we would take recommendations from the school committee. We would not make those, you know, without having the school committee view this.
I have a question. Have you tried to contact the school committee to get this on their agenda?
No, not directly.
Could I ask you why?
Yes, let me just start off here for a few minutes. And Mr. President and members of the council, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to come here tonight. I'm Dick Adams, or Richard, which is what my wife usually calls me, but that's what I'm saying.
When you're in trouble, from what I understand.
Barbara Von Villas is another councilman from Middletown. And we also have two of our school committee members, Kelly DePalma and Bill O'Connell, sitting right there.
Welcome.
They were appointed by our council to this exploratory committee we're going to be talking about in a few moments here. The question that we put up on the little, on our PowerPoint here is simply, a unified high school exploratory committee, why? Now, we're not asking the question, why a unified high school? We're asking, why should we explore it at all? We've had, I think, before, a long and arduous journey with school committees in which we discussed it, cussed it, and studied it. This was several years ago. And came to the conclusion that we had discussed it. So I think at this point, what we, in Middletown, and our council has been very supportive across the board on this, is that we need to, again, take a look at this question of would a unified high school make sense? Now, I'm not trying tonight, and we're not going to try tonight, to convince anybody of the answer to that question. That is a very difficult, complex thing to try to talk about. So we do understand, of course, that our high school is small, your high school is small, Newport's high school is small, and there may be some collaborative things we can do to help ourselves in a sustainable way. I emphasize that word, sustainable. I don't think any of us would gainsay the efforts of our school committees, our teachers, administrators, and so forth to produce the best possible product. We are all here to do the best thing we can for our kids. My wife just recently retired from the Middletown system, and as I walked out of the office, she said, for once, you can quote me. You're here to do the best we can for the kids, and that's what we're about. So I just want, we just want to move through this, but I think that's really keep in mind is we're talking about why form this committee at all. So with that, I will move to Slide 2, which is from that original study group. And what it says is that opportunities exist, this was, excuse me, this was a study done by Ripec looking at financial aspects of it. It was an elaborate study, most of you probably read it or seen it. In any event, it, at one point, comments that opportunities exist to generate significant savings to the districts through consolidation while enhancing educational opportunities. That's a statement that says it ought to be explored. It doesn't say that this is the answer. I think that's what we're trying to proceed to talk about tonight. With that, Barbara, you want to comment on this next one?
I would really like to first address the comments of Mr. President because you did ask a question, and I would like to give a very direct answer as to why we are here and we are not approaching school committees. Mr. Adams has described the activities that took place before on Aquidnic Island in terms of regionalization before. And there were years, I want to say, two years at least probably, of meetings that took place and they went nowhere. And quite frankly, they went nowhere because there was never agreement enough to bring things forward and it never got to the council level. We're at the council level, and it needs to be at the council level. And the reason it needs to be at the council level is because school committees cannot act alone. The council has to act. It is a legal situation under the legislation as it exists. So the councils need to act. We have been working since, I want to say July, first asked for our town administrator to develop a statistical model, which he did, but it took him some time, as we knew it was going to do, over the summer. And in the meantime, we began meeting with people in different communities, underground, we called it, so that we could kind of get a feel for how things were going. And we have, the feedback has been tremendously supportive. Now, I say that, but I say that in relation to the councils, because if the councils were not going to be supportive, we were not going to be going anywhere. So in most cases, we have met with members of the individual councils and spoken to them. Therefore, we are approaching it on the municipal level, which is where the decision will finally be made. Our exploratory committee is not just town counselors, it also is school committee people. So as Mr. Adams has said, we have brought with us two school committee people that were appointed by their school committee to be their representatives on our exploratory committee. And what we're hoping is that each of the communities will do the same, will appoint two representatives to explore as well as two school committee people that would represent the schools to explore, so that hopefully we would come with some sort of a decision. Now, what I'd like to do is I'd like to go just back now to the PowerPoint. I hope that answered your question, so you understand. We're looking at economies of scale. Mr. Adams has mentioned the size of the school, and I believe that you have in your packet, you should have in your packet, a graph or a spreadsheet that looks like this, and it talks about numbers, okay? And if you just take a look, there's a lot of numbers here, but I would just point out to you that it's set up by enrollment, the first column here. If you look here, I can point you to the right place where it says enrollment. If you'll notice, there are increasing enrollments. And then if you look in the right-hand column, the far-right column, you'll see the per pupil costs. And if you look, that's what our particular slide says here. We're looking at economies of scale. The more students that you have, this is a generalization, all schools are different, but as a generalization, the truth is that the larger the enrollment, the lower the per pupil cost. Quality education leads to economic growth. Education needs to be presented to 100% of the students, not just those students who are going to college, give them the best there is, but also to all of those students who are going out into the job force. Because if we don't have a good workforce in our communities, we're not going to get investment, we're not going to have jobs, we're not going to have vibrant communities. So in fact, quality education is very necessary for us to have legitimate economic growth. What is quality education, okay? Well, it's challenging courses to ensure postgraduate success. What that means is not just that we provide AP courses here or there or high-level courses, but it also means a broad type of program so that our kids will be competitive with students that are coming from much larger schools who have greater opportunities. It's also skills training to enable high school graduates to get entry-level jobs, not just minimum wage, if they're able to get a job at all, but to go out there and to be able to earn a decent living so that they can, in fact, support themselves. And also support systems to enable all our students to become productive members of society. What is quality education? It's individual development. We want our kids to have good character. We want them to be able to be independent economically. I don't know if any of you have, but I know that lots of families that have their children, their adult children, still living at home. It would be nice if they were independent, as most of us were when we went out into the world. And community involvement. We want our people that we're educating not only to be involved in their own, their own kinds of activities, but also to pay attention to the community as a whole and to contribute to the community. There are all kinds of opportunities within our communities for students and as they graduate of young adults to participate and provide support in our communities, and not many of them do because we don't teach them how. What do we want? We want common values, values based on relationships within our community, on the things that we consider very important. We want economic stability. In a community, you have to have economic stability. How is the taxes, how do they cover everything if you don't have a stable economy? And civic responsibility. You would like to train people who will eventually be sitting in your seats.
One of the things that we have talked about a lot, and you were alluding to it a little earlier when we talked about the school committees and their involvement and so forth, is the difficulty in today's economic environment in maintaining quality programs. Now, this is a thing that we often see when we're doing our budgets, I know you go through the same thing, and the hard decisions have to be made about reducing programs. Reducing programs takes you away, not toward, an outstanding program. We've visited a couple of larger schools just to take a look at some of these, what large schools are, around 1,800, 2,000 students, what those kinds of numbers allow you to do in terms of programs. Now, I'm not here to tell you that that's a magic number, but I will say that I was somewhat astounded to see the level and diversity and intensity of the courses that were offered. Now, a lot of them were admittedly headed toward college, but even the vocational schools had a breadth and depth, vocational courses, that we don't often see in our smaller schools. So I think, you know, we all know, we're proud of our schools, and we rightfully should be, but I think that it's really also true that we have a sustainability problem. As we look down through the next decades, and I think, you know, I may not be here to see it, but we are going to have some serious problems with maintaining what we have. So we won't explore that idea. And an outstanding program, one of the things that we have heard as we've talked to the other councils, council members, and usually there was at least one or two other school committee members there, is if you just create a new school that is just like what you have, you failed. It has to be much better, not just a little bit, but a great deal better. And that's a, that's a, that's a hard order, and I think that's one of the great challenges that we would face, is how do you create a unified school that is, in fact, outstanding in every respect? That, to me, is one of the greatest questions we'd have to deal with on this committee. So I think, I'm jumping ahead a little bit here by saying that one of the things we're going to be asking you to do, of course, is to join us in this, in this venture, because an outstanding school is something that our kids deserve.
May I ask a question?
Okay, so the question is how? How do you end up with an outstanding program? Well, the first thing that you do is you build a critical mass. A critical mass means that there are enough students that you can provide the kind of program that enables all of the students to have, 100%, of the students to have a broad and deep education. I'll give you an example from a personal experience. In 1990, I was teaching at one of the schools on the island, and there were 1,250 students. There are now 700 students. The program that was in existence at that point in time was, is not possible in the program in the school where, currently, I used to teach, okay? So the problem is you need a critical mass of students, you need enough numbers. Let me, let me explain on a very small scale how that works. If you have one elective that students might enjoy taking, something really special, if you have a small number of students, you can offer one section. If you have 700 students and you offer one section of that course, because the teacher is teaching other things, that means that you have, depending on the size of the course, 16 people in the course or 25, if it's one where you have 25 students. But out of all of those students, in a semester or a year, only those students, that small number of students, will be able to take that course. So a student could go four years through school and never get to take the course that they really wanted to take. So how? Build a critical mass, a broad and deep program for 100% of the students, not just the high achievers, not just those kids that are going on to college, but those kids that are going to stay in our communities, that are going to work here. If you've ever tried to get an electrician to do a small job in your house and you had to wait because the contractors have them doing the big jobs, you know what I mean, how hard it is to get somebody who can do a little job. We need to provide skills for those people to do those kinds of jobs in our communities. I think so.
We just wanted to now move to, what do we see, how do we see this exploratory committee working? So what's the plan? What do we do? We're going to meet, discuss, and collaborate. That's hardly a surprise. That's kind of motherhood and apple pie, but basically, the, we're heading towards, we'll see in a minute in the schedule, we're going, we have to ask the voters ultimately. We expect to put this in a referendum and find out what the voters really think, citizens about this kind of thing. But in order to get to even that point, what we have to do, of course, is meet, discuss, and collaborate and figure out what are the questions. And there are large questions, questions of finance, questions of governance, questions of programs, you can go on and on, the list is almost endless. So what's the next thing to do? Barbara, you want to walk through the schedule here?
Yep.
This is, we see our initial meeting in the very, very near future, like next month.
Yes, we have a plan, and our plan is both relatively short but very dense. We're not going to go on forever like committees have done before and meet and meet and meet and not get anywhere or finally just sort of drift away. Sometime in November, December, we'll have an initial meeting, preferably maybe early December, initial meeting of those people who are interested in just exploring the possibilities. And I do have to stress that. That's all we're asking for now, is to join with us and explore the possibilities. So we will have that initial meeting. Then in, from January to April, we'll have twice monthly meetings with very fixed agendas. We're not interested in just sitting around and chatting. We're interested in, in having identified specifically what's going to be on the agenda, set out with an objective that's going to take place at the end of the meeting, and come to decisions at those meetings. Also during that period of time, we're going to have public workshops. And with those public workshops, we'll, we'll hear people's concerns, their questions, their goals, economic issues with the community, and parents and business partners. They'll all be invited to come to these workshops and to express their opinion and find out what we're doing. In April and May, that's the point at which we will be asking people to make a decision, okay? We, we're not, we're not, we're not trying to convince anybody to do anything at this point. As I said, as Mr. Adams and I said, we're just asking you to join with us to explore and not make a commitment until you have full knowledge. That's the important thing. People have complained, they don't know, they haven't heard, nobody's told them anything, blah, blah, blah. Well, the fact of the matter is, we don't know yet. We need to collect all the information, we need to put it all together, and we need to bring it forward, and then people have to make a decision. If, in fact, someone decides to join with us, we'll be delighted, okay? And then if that's the case... And then if that's the case, in May and June, we will then look for enabling legislation. We don't like the legislation that is existing right now. We don't feel that it necessarily treats the communities fairly. So we are looking at enabling legislation which will be much more appropriate to Newport County. And then if that's the case, if we have partners, we will move forward to a referendum in each of the communities, which would take place in November. We definitely would have to market the concept, we'd have to do all kinds of advertising and so forth. But what we would certainly do is make sure that everybody knew what they were voting on, and then in each community, the people would vote and have the final word as to whether or not we were even going to move forward, okay? So that's what we're hoping for. We're hoping that you will just be interested enough in finding out the information. You have a school that has a smaller number of students than can be effective if it had a larger number of students and a larger program. And quite frankly, we hope you will join us.
Can I say something?
Mr. Adams, do you have one more thing you want to say?
No, I was just going to say, if you have any questions.
Personally, my opinion is, this was a very fine demonstration. You should present it to the school committee. If the school committee feels that we need to enter this endeavor, then the school committee can come and talk to us, and then, at that point, I think, then we should get involved. But this is not, at this point, this is not our responsibility and should not be. This is the school committee's responsibility. I have, I don't know if you're aware of this, I was on the school committee for eight years and chairman for six, and I did do referendums and I did build new buildings. And I think it should start at the school committee level with the superintendent's involvement and their involvement, because we don't really, even me being as involved as I was, I'm four years away from it now. And I really think it's only fair that the school committee hears this presentation. If they feel it's a worthy endeavor, then they should come to us, and I'd be glad to join, as long as the school committee welcomes me.
Essentially, I'm adopting what Mrs. DiMedera says. I don't think anybody would disagree with the concepts and the principles that you've reviewed for us. But the two points that I would really make is, one, as an initial decision maker, I'm totally unfit and unqualified to answer any of the questions that you've posed tonight, including the most important question, and that is, why should we have an exploratory committee? But perhaps most importantly, as a member of the town council, nobody elected me to make these decisions. Nobody expects me to make decisions with regards to the running of the school, and I don't think that I'd be qualified to decide their luncheon menu for tomorrow morning. Being blunt, the second issue I have with this, picking up on what Mrs. DiMedera says, is that specifically your request to the town council is that we appoint two town councillors to a unified high school exploratory committee, and that as a town council, we request that the Tiverton School Committee appoint two school committee members to a unified high school exploratory committee. You know, it's the old adage about the cart caught before the horse. One, I don't think that as a town council, we have any right to direct the school committee to do anything. But secondly, except for Mrs. DiMedera's experience and expertise, I don't know whether anybody is here prepared to say that they're qualified to make this type of decision without the initial input from the school committee. And under our governance here in Tiverton, that initial decision should be made by the Tiverton School Committee, and we should be looking to their recommendation as to whether or not we should be involved in this project.
The only comment I would make is that all of us that are on councils, we operate under the same rules. And I think it's fair to say that we have seen this as ultimately a decision of the town councils.
I don't understand why.
Not, well, I think because ultimately, we're the political body that would say, now, the school committees are going to have the larger role, but we're not designing at this point. This is a question of whether, not how.
The school committee comes to us if they want a referendum or a bond, and certainly they have to get our permission, but it should start with the school committee. And if they need a larger high school, and their recommendations. I've been through it, I've been through it four times. The school department initiates it, and the only responsibility we have is to go out to bond, to go out to the referendum.
According to the legislation which deals with regionalization, and this is a subsidiary of regionalization, the legislation, Chapter 16, talks about the town councils making the decision to go forward. That's the way the legislation is written.
Go forward for the referendum or the bond, but not to go.
Oh, no, no, no. The committees.
I'd have to look at that, as far as regionalization. But I still have to say that this is the school department's responsibility, and I wouldn't want them to make a decision about fire trucks or police cars. This is not where we are allowed to make decisions, or should we? And as a member of the school committee for years, they are more qualified. They know exactly what's going on at the schools. They know exactly what they need. So I don't think it's our decision at all. And if I was on the school committee, I'd be insulted if the town council took any action on this.
Anyone else?
I just have a quick question. I echo the sentiments of Ms. DiMedera and Mr. Lambert here as far as referring to our school committee first. I was just curious, what other communities have you spoken to and who, if any, have?
You're the first council that is entertaining us, okay? We do have, we are scheduled to talk to three additional, we're on the agendas for three councils going forward.
Oh, now, I understood that Portsmouth did not want to get involved.
We are scheduled in Portsmouth on the 12th.
First of all, I want to thank councilors Adams and Von Villes for coming. It was a great presentation. Again, I firmly believe that the school committee is where this should begin, because when it comes down to brass tacks, they're the ones who really know what this town needs as far as schooling, size of buildings, and all those things, what their projected growth in student enrollment is, whether it's in growth or decrease, but they're the ones that have that information. Regionalization, in some instances, I'm sure works fine, but I think we have to look at it as a council.
Absolutely.
And again, I think that recommendation, even to begin an exploratory committee, should come from the school committee. Again, because I feel that they're the ones who know more than we do as far as what the growth, the plan for our schools are. Again, I thank you for your interest, because we all know that the educating of our children is probably the most preeminent thing that we can do in any town. So it's very important, and I thank you for your time. I thank you, and it has not fallen on deaf ears, and again, I suggest that you contact Mrs. Black and present it for the school committee.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you again for coming.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rabbit, I know it's not a public hearing, but I'm a liaison to the council, so could I just say?
Absolutely.
Okay. Sally Black, Chair of the Tiverton School Committee. We thank you for your presentation. We know, we all care about 100% of our students having the programs. And one of the things you said that was most powerful to me was that we want committed citizens of good character coming out of our schools that are willing to give back to the school. So I have a question. Mr. Pelletier, where did you graduate from? Mrs. DiMedera?
Tiverton High School.
Mr.?
Tiverton High School.
Mr. Wilder?
Tiverton High School.
I think Tiverton has done their job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Black. Okay, moving on, Stone Bridge Abutment Repair Project. Council vote to proceed.
Well, Mrs. Micho is coming up. I'll get it going while she's getting organized. You have before you the 30% drawing for the Stone Bridge Abutment Repair.
Jim, can I just ask you to speak up, because I can't even hear you.
I can speak on my own.
Okay. I started to say while Ms. Micho was coming up, I'd stop the ball rolling, so to speak. But this is the 30% design for the repair of the Stone Bridge Abutment. We've had several technical review committee meetings on this design. It has been changed several times to meet the expectations of the review committee. It's been before the Stone Bridge Committee, and it was adopted to move forward and be presented to the council. In the package, you not only have the design, you also have the schedule and a cost estimate that we can review as well. And with that, I'll let Mrs. Micho take it.
Hi.
Hi, Kate.
Kate Micho. And just so you know, I have a copy of the 30% design you all received in your packets, but there's a plan up on the board with some photographs attached if anyone wants to take a look afterwards. Would you like me to run through the basic design concept for the restoration of the abutment?
You can. I'm not sure I'm going to understand it any better.
Okay. The basic things that I think you'd be interested to know, stones are going to be reset where possible, and gaps will be filled in with grout bags and stone gabions. On the north side, the cantilevered sidewalk is going to be removed. From the base to the collapsed section of the wall, the wall is going to be shored up with riprap. That's going to be at a one to one and a half slope. From the collapsed section back and around the end, sheet pilings are going to be driven down into the base of the river, and then back filled with flowable fill, and then that same riprap face will be used. So it's going to have a smooth sloped appearance to make it nice and stable. And then across the top, there will be granite stones used as the cap, and people can sit on the granite blocks. On the south side, there's not going to be much change to the appearance. The existing rail system's going to be removed and replaced with a like rail system. We had looked at the option of an open rail, but the structural engineers thought that a closed rail would be better for storm surge protection and for wave action protection. So it'll be another closed railing, much like is there now. The deck will be resurfaced, and a stand filter water treatment system will be installed to comply with the Rhode Island DEM stormwater regulations, because we're doing amendments to the abutment. We need to bring it up to current standards for stormwater. There will be lighting installed down the length of the abutment, all LED fixtures. If you're interested to know what the fixtures will look like, we're modeling them after the fixtures at Fort Adams in Newport. So they'll be fully shielded, very efficient fixtures that hopefully the seagulls will not be able to find an easy perch on. Electrical service will be installed along the length of the abutment, and water service will be installed to the town dock. A stand pipe will also be installed for fire protection, for the fire department's use. The dock will be put back into usable condition, and a gate will be installed to limit access to the town boats that'll be able to be brought back to that dock. So we'll no longer have to pay for dock space for the town boats. At the base, the parking area at the very base of the abutment on the north side, those spaces are going to be brought back so that you can remove that kind of large expanse of asphalt that's going to be replaced with grass. There's going to be stamped concrete in a cobblestone pattern, and that will be in a U-shaped pattern so that emergency vehicles can have access out onto the abutment if a rescue vehicle needs to get out to the dock or something like that. There'll be removable bollards that restrict access to vehicles except for the emergency vehicles. The doughboy will be uplit, because we've been looking for a way to get the doughboy lit for quite a while now. And we'll also be installing a flagpole next to the Blue Star Monument, and that flag will also be lit. And two panels will be installed on site, one an interpretive panel with some history of the area, and the other will be a replica of the bronze plaque that was on the original bridge. And we have that bronze plaque, but we couldn't think of a way to display it in a secure manner.
Yeah, without them stealing the bronze.
We're going to replicate it in granite instead. And then the drainage system at the base of the abutment will be improved and upsized to handle the runoff that now pools in that area. We're going to take care of that problem.
Great.
So that's a quick rundown.
I have a question. Has there been any conversation about, because I know there was part, the last meeting I went to, there was a discussion about potentially shortening the bridge, the surface of the bridge, while leaving the bits underneath the water intact, because there was some concern about it falling off the face of the earth. Has that been addressed in the new design?
We're going to leave the length the same and use the sheet piles to stabilize. We're going to reset some of those stones that have fallen into the channel where it's possible. We're going to have to go through the Army Corps of Engineers for permitting. So the amount of work we're going to be able to do in the channel is going to be minimal, probably just to reset some easy stones that can be grabbed quickly so that the channel doesn't get blocked up during construction. But the length of the abutment should be approximately the same.
Okay.
With the sheet piling is what's going to make that possible.
I just had a quick comment. I did my best to follow the schematics here, and my only piece of feedback is really minor, and if I missed it, my apologies, but when I was looking at at least the landscape plan, which is on Sheet 15.
Yep.
I didn't see anything with any sort of like bike racks put in there. And I think, I would just ask if we could take a look at how we might be able to incorporate bike racks, because if I think about this as a location, like congregation, you know, I think we can do it to kind of lessen the vehicular traffic and kind of promote alternative modes of transportation for getting down there and enjoying the space might be worthwhile.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, and I would say that we'll definitely try to get it into the budget, and if we can, I'm sure there are grant funds available for that type of installation. But I'll definitely put that in as a comment to the engineers.
Great.
All right, one more question. There was a conversation about sort of making provisions for future intensifications of use or expansion of electrical access, water access, for what might happen in 10, 20, 50 years, vendors or access for water for, you know, an event or something like that. Is that contemplated in this? I know we were talking about, you know, running conduit but not putting any wiring in it for now, and running pipe but not connecting it, and all this kind of business.
We have electrical service running all the way the length of the abutment in this plan. And the electrical boxes will be installed in the base of the lighting fixtures, locked boxes that'll be watertight. So that service will be taken care of. And water service is going to be installed to the dock, so we'll have water service halfway down the abutment. And that way, you know, the dock boat, the boats can be washed down and all that. So definitely, we're trying to look towards future possible uses, leaving options open for the future.
Anything else from the council? Then I will entertain a motion for them to proceed with the 30%.
I move that we approve or grant permission to proceed on the Stone Bridge Abutment Repair Project as referenced in B2N, B2A.
We have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I also want to say thank you to everyone, all the department heads in the Stone Bridge Committee that worked really hard to keep this going for many, many years. So thank you to them as well.
Continuing public hearing for proposed ordinance amendment, Chapter 47, foreclosed in vacant properties. Town solicitors propose further amendments for presentation. Public hearing continued from October 15, 2013. Mr. Tights?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have reviewed the comments submitted by Mr. Bennetts, which were the major comments at the last public hearing. And I have adopted... And I have adopted several of Mr. Bennetts' suggestions, particularly with the defining of terms, and with further copies of notice, such that a copy of the notice of the vacancy be delivered to other officials, not just posted on the building. And if action is taken without any emergency action, that notice be sent concurrently to the owner and owner's agent, after listening to the council last time. And considering the comments, the council members and whatnot, I did not accept a lot of the comments. Some of them were just defined terms, which I didn't think was defined. But the other things, I mean, I was not concerned that this was going to be misused. This is not a seaside Florida-type ordinance as to how high your grass can be. It's really meant just to deal with the problem that we have here, and I think it's sufficient to deal with that without, in a way, handstringing the official and making it impossible to deal with. If you, you know, have limits about 30 and 90 days, then we won't have a problem. There are some properties that will be vacant for some period of time, and we won't even know about it, because they're all taken care of and so forth, and that's fine. We're not out to force people to do it. There are other properties that'll be vacant for four or five days, and we'll have a problem right away, and we want to be able to move on those fairly quickly. The only thing is, I would just ask one more change. There had been a suggestion by Councilor Pelletier, and I had missed that, which was to eliminate from the paragraph 47, 47-1, the references to...
Derelicts, vagrants, criminals.
Right, yeah. And I was going to suggest we take out that whole invitation to derelicts, vagrants, and criminals as a temporary abode, and leave the rest of it, and as a place to engage in illegal conduct. I think that's something that we do have concerns about, but suggest we take that, the third line, delete "an invitation to derelicts, vagrants, and criminals" as a temporary abode. Delete that.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Tights?
No, that's all I...
Okay, continuing the open hearing. Is there anything else from the public? Mr. Bennetts? And Mr. Bennetts, I'm just going to say the Red Sox are on tonight, so...
That's all right, I'm getting texts.
Don't you have a recorder? I like to see everything in real time.
I have 10 copies of...
Is it what we...
The continuation of the changes. I'm going to ask you to be very brief, Mr. Bennetts, because we have copies. We can look at them, and we'll give them to the town solicitor, and he will review them.
What I have done is gone, I've gone over the amount, the items, and most of the comments have not been addressed adequately or at all. And what I've done to, I guess I've kind of assumed that you would want to cut it shorter than the last time. So basically, it's almost a repetition of the last time, but what I've done in order to make it easier for everybody and shorter, I've highlighted in yellow the key items. But the rest of the items here are still important, but the yellow items are the most significant. For instance, on page two, not included in the revision D4 is my requested statement, "A property shall not be considered vacant while the occupants are absent for a period of 30 days or less in order to accommodate a reasonable length vacations and/or business trips and/or vacations. And the property shall not be considered vacant while the occupants are absent for a period between 30 and 90 days if reasonable attempts are made to maintain the appearance of an occupied property. Actions such as providing for grass maintenance to a length of less than 12 inches, discontinuance of mail, and monitoring of the property on a weekly documented schedule by a designee of the owner." And the comment alongside of that, the word "overgrown" lacks a definition and is open to interpretation. One person's overgrown may be another person's natural appearance. The word "overgrown" is also based upon finances, where a poor man's budget balances growth against finances. I think the statement that we don't need additional definition is totally improper and inadequate. I believe that when an ordinance is written, it should be written as if you have a dozen people available the day that it takes notice to go out there and enforce it to the hilt. If that's going to create a problem, then your ordinance has a problem. You should not write an ordinance assuming that it's not really going to be enforced the way it's written. If you give a building inspector or official, who will obviously be the building inspector, because I don't believe you intend on going out and hiring a separate official to enforce this ordinance, you give him ultimate authority, and he's either incompetent because he's not exercising it properly, or he's doing something wrong. You are responsible for defining things. You should not be putting in words like "overgrown" without a definition, particularly with...
Mr. Bennetts, we got that.
With expenses the way they are now.
Okay. I'm just going to make a couple of comments.
Yes, on page three.
Okay, before we go on, page two. "A property shall not be considered vacant while occupants 30 days or less and then 30, 90 days." Well, first of all, I don't know how many people are going to tell the town that they've gone on vacation.
I would say anybody that is intelligent, that goes on vacation for more than a week or two, should be notifying the police that they are on vacation.
I don't think, I don't think most people do.
It would be, it would be an intelligent person who notifies the police and the fire department when they go on vacation.
I believe, I believe most people don't. They may tell their neighbors, but I don't think they tell the police, you know, or the fire department or town hall that they've gone on vacation. Okay, as I said before, I'm going to give this to Mr. Tights, just to look at it. Again, some of the revisions I don't agree with. I believe that it's clear enough. I think any reasonable person will understand what is meant.
What's the definition of reasonable person? Person that thinks exactly the way you do?
No, someone who can walk onto a property and tell whether or not it's vacant or not. So, so again, I will have Mr. Tights just review it again in some areas, if there's any need of further clarification. I personally believe that it looks pretty good to me. But we will give it the once more.
I still have a few more comments that I've outlined in yellow.
Okay, I think we can, we can read them, so we will...
I'd like to make them a matter of public record to somebody else.
They are. You've given it to us. It is now a matter of public record.
Excuse me. Who are...
I am the town sergeant. You are disturbing this meeting. And the next step will be the police chief.
I...
You have given your comments already.
I have a couple of questions. Can I please ask the question?
You have to give us five minutes to read the document which you have presented us before we can comment or make any...
Can I please ask one question on the top of page three that has been confusing me as I reviewed it?
Okay.
The question on the top of page three that I have outlined in yellow is, "Have the proposed changes left in red been accepted or rejected?" The changes have been made or indicated. They're listed here, but they are listed in red. Does that mean that they have been accepted? They're not in black, as I would normally expect.
I think they're in red because it's a red line, and we needed to see the changes from the original version that was presented at the last meeting.
And then not accepted until this council votes to accept it.
We haven't voted on this, Roger.
So the answer you're saying is, if they're in red and you accept it, you will be accepting what's written in red?
Correct.
That is correct.
Thank you. Because it's very confusing. I'm used to seeing, when you go into track changes and you click "accept," the red goes away.
But what I've done here is I left the two. If it's a red change, it was something that was there, that was either there in the original version or added here in the second version, and the blue stuff is your changes, which were left. If it's not there, the blue, unfortunately, there's, you know, there's only a limit to how many, I have to accept everything to have everything show up. We'd have to accept, effectively, accept everything of yours and then reject it. So I've simply, as I indicated in my comments, the ones, the changes that you had requested that were in your original version that I rejected are not included here. But if it's in blue or red, it would be included in the final version.
All right. Thank you very much. That means you've accepted a lot more than I thought.
Right.
Yes. If it's in blue, I've accepted it.
Yeah, that's why I was confused, because it has.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just say a few, if I could just say a few words as...
Thank you, Roger.
...the person who requested this, I think this is going way beyond. This is, this is not intended for people who don't mow their lawns.
Right.
Okay? Or don't wash their windows. This is intended for unoccupied or vacant homes.
Or buildings or...
Right. Any, any property that's vacated and has left totally to go awry. It's not for people that don't mow their lawns. It's not for people that go to the hospital. We're not talking about periods of 30 days. It's very obvious when a home is vacant and/or unoccupied. And that's what the intent of this is. So let's please not take it way out of context and push it toward people who go on vacation. Thank you.
Just one comment on that, Ms. Donswell. There are snowbirds that do leave here to go down to Florida and leave their property vacant for more than 30 days.
All my neighbors.
There are also summer cottages that are used in the summer and vacant during the winter. There are also businesses that are open in the summer and closed in the winter, similar to Evelyn's. Now, that would, this ordinance would apply to those locations. That's all I'm saying.
Well, it was not in my intent to apply to those businesses...
But that's, that's the whole point. There are unintended consequences in this document. This applies not just to what you're intending, there are unintended consequences. And I named a few the last time, but I have a whole nother list of issues and concerns, and I'm not going to go over them tonight, because this is going way beyond, it's just going way beyond, as far as property rights are concerned.
If I can, I'll just make, just a brief remark. Businesses that close for, that are seasonal, 99% of them make sure that their properties are attended to while they're not there. People who own summer homes, most try to have somebody watch their property, or they come down and check them because of storms and so forth. As far as snowbirds are concerned, I deal with this, because 99% of my neighbors are snowbirds, and they all either have somebody watch their property, or somebody come mow their lawn, because when the winter comes, they don't need their lawns mowed, as far as people, military people who, you know, who are deployed. I think everyone understands that and takes that into consideration. I mean, there are a lot of instances. I don't think this ordinance is as far-reaching as somebody is trying, as people are trying to make it. It's a common sense ordinance to ensure that vacant properties, properties that aren't being attended to, are at least noticed, and somebody goes and says, "Hey, there's a property that's got four feet of grass in front of it, and even if they went away for six months, it needs to be attended to." Then it becomes a public hazard. So I think that's, that's what this ordinance is about, in my opinion. So I don't think it's as far-reaching and as, you know, dictatorial as some people are trying to make it.
The question I have, and maybe I'm not catching it, is that it, this ordinance applies to every property in town, but it's only a violation of the ordinance if you meet certain criteria. And that's not just leaving your property in goods, you know, in good keep and maintaining it for your summer or your winter in Florida. It's, it's, there are specific enumerated violations that would cause action to be taken, and I don't, maybe I just don't see it, but if I don't, show it to me, and I'm happy to look at it. But I mean, we're talking about broken windows and doors, openings, access, allowing access to the interior, you know, being vacant for longer than 60 days unless you are doing repairs, or you are monitoring the property or having it maintained. I don't, I think all of the situations in which we've discussed where you close down seasonally if you're a commercial business owner, or you go away for the, for the winter season, I don't think you would be there by default in violation of this ordinance. You would have to allow your property to be, the interior to be accessible with broken windows or other, or doors, missing or broken windows or doors, or you just flat-out have not monitored or maintained it at all. And in the instance of, you know, snowbirds, I mean, I think it would go so far as a broken window would constitute a violation, and I think if you don't know that your house is potentially going to be burgled because you have access allowed in, I mean, like I said, I don't, I don't see where this is overreaching, and maybe I'm just not seeing it, but I'm happy to, happy to be told otherwise.
As I believe was stated last time, there are already state law and local ordinances that pertain to uninhabitable dwellings. So if the dwelling itself has an issue, then there's already laws on the books, so to speak, that take care of that. So what you're reduced to is, you're reduced to the yard, and as far as I'm concerned, that's private property, and if the yard is, has two washing machines in the driveway and nobody seems to have been around, well, if the washing machines are stolen, that's the owner's responsibility, and that's not the town's. So I think it's a matter of who's responsible for maintaining the property, and where does the town come in to say, "You must do this," when it's the property owner's responsibility to maintain their own property, to the way they see fit, not the way we see fit. That's all I'm saying.
I think that, I'm just going to give two sentences on that. I think that there's a line we have to draw between the government and this body as a, an advocate for the population as a whole. We can protect one group without infringing upon the other's rights, and I think that's all that this is trying to do. I think in a, in an idealized world, that everyone would maintain their property to their neighbor's standards, but that's not really the problem. The problem is when properties have gone unmaintained for years, and it is causing both criminal activity, social, you know, troubles, and although I don't necessarily agree with the depressing market values of surrounding properties, that argument certainly is foremost in a lot of people's minds, so that's all I'm going to say about that.
Okay, we're still in a, in a public hearing, so I'm going to ask if there's anyone else from the public. I'll ask again, is there anyone else from the public? Third time.
You know, Jeffrey Belli, Burt Street. From what I've been listening to, you know, and they're all valid arguments, but myself being prior military and a prior member of the special operations community, if you have anybody in this neighborhood who is in the military, who is a part of the special operations community, they could deploy at a moment's notice, and they can't tell the police chief that their house is going to be vacant, especially if both family members are in the military. They're not, they're going to be gone for at least a year. What I feel, you know, and Mrs. Shabbat said exactly how I feel, this ordinance is overreaching. You should not be worrying about properties that people are still living in the house, still own the property, and are still paying their taxes. The properties you need to worry about are the houses that have been foreclosed, people are breaking into them constantly, and that nobody is living in them at all. That is where your vagrants are going to be going to. Not worrying about how high somebody's grass is, because I'll tell you right now, I don't cut my grass on a weekly basis. I've let my grass get, you know, a good three or four inches before I cut it. And as far as, from what I'm hearing, I'd even be in violation of that, and I'm living in my house. You know, when you start getting into how high grass is and everything, you're going too far.
Mr. Belli, when you talk about deployments, and I have a son who's in the military, so I understand, and no one, even if they leave at a moment's notice, nobody in the military with the training that they have would leave and not have somebody know their property was not going to be there.
You're wrong. I will tell you that right now. You're wrong. I'm a former member of special operations, and I can, you know, I can't even disclose, you know, certain things, but I will tell you right now, being, when I was in the military and when I was a part of that community, luckily enough, I was in the barracks. You know what they would do in my unit? When we would, that unit would be getting deployed, everybody on the base, your phones would be immediately shut off. You cannot call anybody. You can't even call a family member to say, "Hey, can you please come look after my room or take care of my bills?" I had bills come out, you know, my credit waiting went in the toilet because I couldn't, you know, phone my mother to tell her I was being deployed to take over my bills, because all phones would be shut off. They listen to things like that, and especially, you know, with what's going on with the leaks today, they're immediately looking at our military personnel to see who's talking. You don't think that they, that the military does not listen to these cell phones? You're dead wrong. You know.
All right, Mr. Belli.
You need to worry about the houses that nobody is living in.
And that's why it's called foreclosed and vacant property. It's not intended...
When you start talking about grass height...
But we're not talking about grass height.
You're getting off topic.
Could I add one comment, Mr. President?
Why not?
First of all, I'll admit I went on a one-and-a-half-week vacation notified absolutely no one.
I feel like I missed a lot.
That said, in a small town like this, I really don't think people, at the government level, act arbitrarily or with draconian intent. In a typical town like this, I suspect every, in quotes, "nosy busybody" knows exactly what the status is of every piece of property in the neighborhood, and they can define for you, is this property occupied or is this property vacant? So if you really want to know, check with the chief, check with Mr. Goncalo. They can tell you the status of any property in a small community like this, which I suspect has, based on the number of households, no more than 5,700 homes in this town.
Like I followed in that train of thought, we get calls daily about suspicious cars parked in the neighborhood. Someone's walking down the street who has a beard. They let us know if they've been in the area.
It's a Red Sox.
It's not a Red Sox team member or an Amish person looking to build a bond. It's just a situation of someone who looks out of place, and we do get these calls constantly. So I think that's the intent to just understand. Public safety is our concern. We do check things out, no matter how small they may be. So I think this is, we're fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, just to expound on that a little bit, a little while ago, I bought a new car, and my wife had left for work and took her car. I brought my new car home and put it in the driveway. She came back and picked me up, and off we went. I got home, there were seven messages on my phone that there was a strange car in my driveway. So let me tell you, your neighbors know what's going on. Again, I don't know if we need any further discussion, but Andy will review.
Andy, I have read this four or five times just sitting here, and however many times I did before that. There is no recitation in here to the length of someone's grass, is there? Am I missing that?
No, the only comment about grass was actually in Mr. Bennet's comments, which I did not accept.
It does say overgrown, so...
It does say overgrown. That's correct.
Where does that, where is that? In evidence of vacancy?
Yeah, it's part of the overall issues. Overgrown or dead vegetation.
The fourth line down in evidence of vacancy.
Such conditions include but are not limited to overgrown or dead vegetation under evidence of vacancy.
Yep.
It is not a violation under this ordinance, although I will tell you, since we referenced the entire code, there is stuff in the Basic Life Safety Code and the state building code that would already cover it. If your vegetation is long enough to harbor rodents, or if you've got other things out there in your yards that are harboring rodents, it's already a violation under existing state law and has been for over 100 years. So we're not changing. We're just saying, what would you look at? What would be the conditions? And again, it's part of the, you know, on the one hand, we're trying to define things, as has been suggested. On the other, you know, some of these things we are leaving, we can't define every term and every term within every definition. People can look, as our courts have said, you can turn to a dictionary if it's not otherwise defined. And it's only one of the several things that would lead you to that evidence of vacancy. And as you indicated, Mr. Belli, it's not, having the property vacant isn't a violation.
Right.
What's a violation is if it's, if it is not maintained to code, you have some code violation if you have it open to the elements, or if you don't have people checking it so that it has that evidence of vacancy. That's the only things that are the violation under this.
Mr. Tice, under evidence of vacancy, the fourth line down, it says without a light right of occupancy? What is a light right of occupancy?
I think the light is there as a typo.
Where were we?
The fourth, under the definition evidence of vacancy?
On page two.
On page two, the fourth line down.
I think that should be legitimate, actually.
Yes.
And spell check changed it to light.
Legitimate right of occupancy.
Yes. So in other words, if it is occupied by people who don't have a legitimate right to be there, then that wouldn't...
Anything else from the council? Okay, I will close the public hearing now. Okay. I always suggest, Mr. Tice, that you just do one final proofing.
Okay.
And then present it to the council at our next meeting for a vote.
Okay, continued for vote only?
Yep.
Isn't that an open hearing?
No.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue. Item B3, public, no, item B3.
We're not continuing the public hearing.
We're not continuing the public hearing.
The proposed amendment to be reviewed by the town solicitor and then to return to the council at our next meeting for a vote, for a final vote.
So moved.
Like you said, second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Appointments and resignations. Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee vote on revised resolution and an appointment of three public members.
I'd like to just say something about the appointment of three public members. I noticed that Scott Humphrey has applied for the, one of the three members of the community, but wouldn't he automatically be on it at this point because he's chairman of the Economic Development Committee? Did you know that, Scott? Oh, you did. Okay.
So do you have two seats then?
Hopefully not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I just wanted to bring that up.
I thought that you had voted on this, the revised resolution at the last meeting, but clerk confirms to me that you did not.
No, we did not.
So I think that's the first thing you need to do, that you have the policy of, you know, voting on the committee to which you will be appointing people and then deal with the appointments. I thought you had, but the minutes in the tape revealed that you, there seemed to be consensus that you approved it, but there was no motion.
No, no, we didn't have a motion.
No motion, no second, no vote to approve it, so...
Because we had the questions about who should be on it.
I don't remember.
I thought, but we haven't changed any of who should be on it, have we?
Well, we've crossed out, Andy, the...
There's no changes since this was last before you.
The third whereas clause that's been crossed out, the one in the red.
Yes.
That's now, is that considered deleted at this point?
Yes, yes. What you're looking at here, this was adopted last June. No. No, no, but I'm saying, but it was adopted last June. This resolution was adopted last June, and then before you, on September 23 of this year, was the proposed amendments to it, which are in red, showing things that are being removed from the June resolution are struck out, and things that are just plain in red are the things that are added to it. And that's what I thought had been voted on, but it hadn't.
But this is what we had last year.
That's what you had last time in September, but you never actually took a vote on it. So the proposal is first, to amend the resolution that you adopted over a year ago, as indicated here with the red changes, and then if you so do, if you do so, to go ahead with the appointments. And you had definitely postponed it because you wanted to allow time for solicit members, but apparently there was no actual motion on September 23.
Could I ask a question, Mr. President?
Why don't we have a motion and a second, then we'll have a discussion.
Okay, we'll have a motion and a second then.
So I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Here is my discussion, and actually, I realize the issue when I see the people who are being identified to be appointed and have submitted applications. The portion that's being deleted is, whereas the town council wishes to make the process as inclusive as possible, so that the amendment to the plan can best express the wishes of the people of Tivon as to how and where the town should develop and grow over the next two decades. I think that would be understood anyways, even if you didn't have that paragraph in there. But the, I guess the issue I now have with deleting it, and please, no one take this personal, but I think that the, that whereas clause does express the hope that the group would be as inclusive as possible. Yet, and this is not meant as a criticism, it's wonderful to have volunteers, but the truth is, we have volunteers who live on the same street. We have volunteers that are on the same committees. I tried to cross-reference some of these, and we actually have one board or committee in town that could have as many as three people on this Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. I guess the only comment I'm making is, in going through these appointments tonight, my hope, and at least what my effort would be in going over the list of candidates, this is not meant to be personal, I'm not being judgmental, but my hope is, at least my purpose will be, to make this as inclusive as possible, so that just about every portion of the town, to the extent that's possible, is going to be represented on the advisory board. I know that's not possible from the number of people who have been, who have submitted applications, but I hope that that remains a focus when we're making these appointments, even if that particular paragraph is deleted for whatever reason.
Well, Jay, they also reduced the number of public members down to three.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I understand. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. No, it was just that whereas all of a sudden disappears, and that's the portion that says we're hoping to make this as all-inclusive as possible. And as I say, it dawns on me when I look at the people who have submitted applications, that in truth, and this is not a personal judgment, believe me, because I'm sure we should be happy that we have people that are looking for appointments, but it is not all-inclusive of this town. Let's, you know, be blunt about it.
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's a difference between all-inclusive and looking for a cross-section, a representative sample. And, I mean, part of the thing to realize is, this, the duties of this group have changed as time progressed, and the planning board has gone ahead, created the subcommittees, and the planning board is already working diligently on it. So this is not going to be the main driver of the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. I sort of look at this as a vehicle to vet publicly the Comprehensive Plan Amendments as the planning board is doing it, and to act as a liaison and a connection between the council and the rest of the boards and commissions, on the one hand, and the planning board and their Comprehensive Plan Committee on the other hand, so that when this comes forward in less than a year from now with, you know, a new set of Comprehensive Plan Amendments, it won't be something that's cold, that people have no idea, "Oh, my God, I've been working on this now for two years. I've done it. We got to suddenly catch up from scratch." If people have gone to the meetings long, and there'll be this cross-section of the community, both the boards and commissions and some representatives of the public, so that there'll be hopefully a consensus support of those comp plan amendments before they even get to the council. And that's why it's important, too, to have the two members of the council, which I think you've already previously appointed anyway, so that it doesn't come as a surprise to the council either.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess to echo Mr. Lambert's concerns, I also have the similar thought of making sure the body is as balanced as possible to represent all facets of town, as Mr. Lambert also pointed out. I also be interested in making sure that there isn't any one type of majority of one type of thought, but a nice balance so that there is no majority. So we get, so we actually get a feasible, balanced, and well-thought-out Comprehensive Plan that doesn't really favor any one particular party or persons, but everyone.
Yep. If I may?
Yes.
The other thing to remember, this is only an advisory committee, too. In the end, the comp plan you get will be the one sent to you by the planning board. The advisory committee will have its comments and advice to you, but they won't actually stop or prevent or control anything. It will be that advice. As I said, hopefully, my view is that they could be that consensus element to bring people together, as you've indicated.
Who's the other town council member besides me? I should know that. Who is it? Oh, is it you?
Joe. Joe, all right. We did advertise, right?
Yes, we did.
And this is what we received, so other parts, you know.
We advertised, we said it to everybody we know, and I want you to know that the list of the people that applied, that's just alphabetical. I had no other way to put it on.
But everybody was welcome to, to apply.
This has been advertised at least twice.
It wasn't like we searched for these people with the same locations in town. This is what we have as applications.
No, I didn't search for anyone in any...
Right. Well, that's what I wanted. Make sure people know.
Yeah. We do have a motion pending, though. You should deal with that before you get out to the point.
We have a motion, and I will continue just the discussion before. I kind of like the whereas, myself. I think it just gives a sense of openness that we've done our best to include as many, you know, people, you know. So that would be my only... So I, that would be my only.
Motion.
Yeah. You keep wanting to keep the whereas.
Yeah, I would request a.
I'll amend the motion to accept the revised resolution establishing the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, including the addition of the third whereas paragraph that is currently redlined and deleted.
Second, yeah.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See, none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, now, next is the appointment. Susan Anderson.
Mr. President, quickly, we go through everyone, then do nominations at the end, or, okay?
Yeah, we just get meet and greet, so everyone knows who they are. Hi, Susan.
Hi.
How are you? Okay, the public does not have this, so they don't know anything about you, even though most of us know who you are. If you could just tell them a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee.
Right, well.
And the socks start in seven minutes, I don't want to rush you.
Well, my other show starts in a half an hour. The Comprehensive Plan has a lot of historic character. This town is deemed in small-town character, historic-town character, historic, all, all throughout. I am the co-chair of the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. I am also a board member of the Tiverton Historical Society, and I believe I can bring that perspective to the Comprehensive Plan. I've also been on the Open Space Committee for, I don't know how many years, and when the last plan was revised, I was helpful, you know, helping Gary in, in doing that, too. So I'm quite familiar with the Comprehensive Plan.
Anything from the council? All right, thank you, Susan. Jonathan Cutrell.
Mr. Cutrell called, he will not be able to make it this evening.
Okay. Renee DeJesus-Jones.
Hello. Hello.
Again, same thing.
I'm feeling we're not like at the bottom of the barrel, I mean, we really do volunteer here. I won't take it personally, though. Okay. I, I always like to take the long view of things. I think one of the reasons we have a Comprehensive Plan is that we have to think, you know, we're so caught up in the day-to-day decisions that we sometimes don't have the luxury of looking at what build-out will look like in the town, and how that will have an impact on the quality of life and the type of community that we are. I do feel that, you know, we've gone through these cycles of kind of boom and bust, and right now, we're kind of at a, you know, we're chugging along at the bottom. But having been in the town when we had a lot of pressure to do a lot of different things very quickly, I think this is the time that we need to really sit and think about what we want our town to look like and how we want it to function, you know, not just for our generation, or my daughter's generation, but we're talking about grandkids. I mean, you all, you know, are people who grew up in the town of Tiverton, I'm sure you're looking forward to having your own children grow up in the town of Tiverton, but what kind of town will that be when they're growing up? And that's why I'm interested in being on the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, anything from the council? Okay, thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
John Foley.
Good evening. I've lived in Tiverton for 26 years. For most of that time, I've been involved with town affairs, either at a public level or private level. I've been on the board of the Tiverton Land Trust now since 2007, served as chair of the Land Protection Committee, chair of the Finance Committee, vice president, now I'm the treasurer. Before that, I served on a Charter Review Commission. I found in, in both of those positions, my current and the Charter Review Commission, we dealt with very discreet, narrow issues. At the land trust, you know, is there a particular property that we can acquire and preserve? What do we do about some particular issue that we're having at one of the properties we already own? Charter Review Commission, what should be the particular provisions of a certain part of, of our town charter? This is something completely different, and I share Renee's perspective on this. This is a long view. This document determines what we want to be, and what should we be in the long run. And I think with the experience I have in different parts of, of town affairs, both public and private, it's something that I have a perspective on. I care deeply about this town, and I care what happens to it. And I think this is a role where I could bring some perspective and some skills to bear.
Okay, anything from the council?
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Scott Humphrey.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Scott.
So I was trying to think, sitting over there, what I could possibly bring to this, and I have no idea. I don't think I have any idea what I'm in for in the next year or so. So I can only reflect back on, on who I am, how I've conducted my business here in town, and hope that I could bring some, some of that same history to the Comprehensive Plan that's going to go forward. We heard from John that it is a visionary document, but I think it's based on what we've got right now. And I'm just hoping that we can all come together and put together a good document for the town of Tiverton.
Thanks. And Scott, I think, based on the original breakout of who we thought should be standing, quote-unquote, members of, of this committee, as chair of the Economic Development Commission, you're already on it.
You're on it.
You're already there.
Yes.
You're already there.
So, so welcome and congratulations.
Yeah.
Are you saying, Mr. President, I'm happy?
We don't even have to appoint you today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
I might add, Scott, since your parents are such good friends and next-door neighbors, I want to make this special note, I wasn't going to vote for you, Scott, because you're already on the board.
Cecil Leonard.
Good evening.
And before you say anything, Cecil, I just want to say how good it is to see you back in this chamber.
Well, thank you, that's very kind of you. To answer the, the question that's been asked of everybody else, I've been a town resident for 38 years. I'm very interested in making sure that the town continues to be the pleasant place that it is. I think because of my various roles in government activity, I bring a particularly good perspective. Particularly, I think my work on the Charter Review Commission gives me broad contacts throughout the community. I think that really one of the important things that I have is, as some of you remember, in, it was September of 2012, we had a workshop pertaining to planning and zoning issues, and I had the opportunity to set through that and review the written comments. And I think the last thing that I bring is that because of the years of public service, I'm very good at listening. I've had a lot of phone calls over a lot of years that I've done a lot of listening. So, thank you, that's why I'm interested.
Thank you. Anything from the council? Thank you, Cecil.
Thank you.
Peter Mello.
Peter Mello called, he had a last-minute commitment, so he's unable to make it.
At this time, I will listen to the council. I'll entertain a motion.
Just a point of order, Mr. President, should we be nominating individuals one at a time, or?
Yes.
You know, the, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint John Foley as a member of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee.
Second?
I'll second it. We have two seconds. Mr. John Foley, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Foley. I, I would like to nominate Cecil Leonard.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
And I'd like to nominate Jonathan Cutrell.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Two, three, three? Opposed?
What did you vote?
What? All right, so it's four, three.
Can you, can you do it again? It was too quick for Nancy was.
The yeses for Mr. Cutrell. Brett, did you, did you vote?
Yeah, he keeps voting.
Do I have to keep it up? Good lord.
I have them outside.
Okay.
You need to really.
Opposed? Four to three. Okay, so that will.
So we have three now?
We have three now.
Yeah. Could I reiterate that, the comment, Mr. President, that please do not take this personal at all? I, I honestly tried to vote based on what I thought would be the most inclusive group. And I think going from Mr. Cutrell, who certainly would be familiar with the North Tiverton area, Mr. Leonard, who has vast experience in government and business matters, and Mr. Foley, whose experience we're all familiar with, would be an excellent cross-section. So I, for those who may be disappointed, I, I almost owe you an apology, but I, I came in here with the intent to make this a cross-section, and I, and I hope, to some extent, with, with the applications that we had, that I, that, that we were, that we were able to achieve that.
Okay, I, I want to thank everyone who applied, first of all. And I want to ask you all, those that did apply, to show up to these meetings, bring your expertise, especially when we get to hearings, we value your input. So again, this is not a slight, it's not that you're not wanted, you're wanted, but unfortunately, we only had three seats at the table. But again, thank you all, I can't express how thankful we are and how lucky we are in this town to have people who volunteer. And because, let me tell you, you, the volunteers in this town do a lot more work than most of us sitting behind this desk do.
Are you speaking for yourself again, Ed?
Yes.
And I think the Red Sox are winning. Yeah, you're the Red Sox winning?
One, nothing.
There you go, Ed.
One, nothing, for those who are interested. Okay, moving right along, financial business, DPW Stephen Berlucci.
Well, Stephen Berlucci is coming up to the mic to answer any detailed question. One of our bulldozers needed repairs. The repairs totaled $14,791. The budget in that account is only $12,000, and some of that's been used, so there is a necessity to transfer $7,195. Mr. Berlucci, if you want to explain why the repairs were needed?
Yeah, I would just like to enlighten you that the two dozers we have are year 2000 and a year 2007. It's been customary to replace the dozers after five years. We're going to try to make it, these two last till the end, and hopefully, five years out. So we're going to sustain some more maintenance than, than normal, because we're not going to be turning these machines in and getting new machines. And the problem with this is, the funds, the funds are coming out of my, my normal maintenance account, which is just about making it also. And hopefully, we'll make it through, and we have to have both dozers by DEM permit. Obviously, we have to have one running at all time to cover the landfill every single day. So that's a little bit of background on the two, and I think we can make it, I think we can keep these two going, even though the older one is now like 13 years old. They work six days a week, too.
Steve, what was the nature of the repairs?
The whole bottom end rollers, tracks, they just wear out, just constant use, and they just wear out. I'm going to be putting $55,000 in as a request for next year's budget, because the other dozer that we just didn't fix is going to need a total low-rent rebuild, which is common every five to six years, and it's going to need that. So it's, it's, it's maintenance service, more than anything major that broke down, it's just they wear out.
What do these things cost new?
Yeah, I was just going to ask the same question.
I'm not quite sure, I didn't look, but I'd say in the three, 350 range, you're, you're going to be up there, yeah.
We were on a, we used to be on a program of replacing one of the dozers every five years. And it was a five-year financing, so we always had a, we always had a payment for a dozer, because as one hit the five-year mark, we bought another one, because of the, the nature and, and the abuse that they take.
Anything from the council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize a transfer of $7,195.17 from account 5540-6648 to account 5530-7645, to cover a bulldozer repair.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new business, town administrator requests council approval for annual salary increase from 82-209 to 83-853, a 2% for year two of three-year contract for Police Chief Thomas Blakey.
The chief is in the second year of his employment contract, and this is the annual salary increase for the second year. And, Mr. President, you've already stated it, it's going from 82,000-209 to 83-853, an increase of 2%.
What are the effect, what's the effective date? It's like June, isn't it, or something?
September.
September, that's what I meant. You heard wrong, September.
Effective September 1st?
No, I believe it's the eighth.
Okay. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the request for, for, a salary increase from 82,000-209 to 83,853, a net resulting increase of 2% for Police Chief Blakey.
Second?
Effective September 1st.
Eight.
Effective September 1st.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Request for auction, DPW surplus equipment.
We have surplus equipment that is still in operational condition, and rather than just put it up for the lowest bid, we, I'm going to try something different, and put it up for bid with a minimum bid, so that we can get some value out of the remaining life it has. And if there are any questions, Mr. Berlucci can answer them, hopefully.
I just had one quick question, is, can individuals or companies bid on these items individually, one at a time, or is it a package deal, they got to take them all?
Individually, and anyone, anyone can bid, companies, individuals, one at a time.
But they can go for the, you know, '06 Crown Vic and not anything else, right? They don't have to take all of these?
No, they don't take half all, no.
Okay.
And this is even, this is open to anyone, even town employees?
Oh, it is.
It's the highest bid.
Need a cement mixer?
No.
I'll buy an espresso.
I don't know, I've always wanted an Essex cement mixer, so.
I've got two, I mean, they're great to have.
I used to own a Ford.
Me, too.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the auction of town property as illustrated in item G. of town property as illustrated in item G2.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
If I might just make one more point. The revenue from this will go into the general fund with one exception. And that's the '99 Ford Taurus, which will go back to the police department.
Is that a light fasting operation?
It was a drug vehicle.
There is a car you'd want to bid on, a 1999 Ford Taurus, involved in drug dealing.
All right, moving along. Town administrator, items and announcements.
Just to clarify something. And that's regarding the executive assistance contract to the town administrator. The model contract has a reference that the, some of the benefits are mirrored, the health benefits are mirrored to the AFSMI contract. That's in all contracts at this point, and all contracts that are in existence. Like the fire chief's contract, the police chief's contract. That language is still in there. So, I'm just moving forward with that, and I just want that clarification. The second item is, we started out with 107 properties going to sale for non-payment of taxes. We are now down to 22. And the auction will be on November the 8th at 10:00 a.m. Our tax levy. We have collected 52.21% of the tax levy.
I'm sorry, what was it again?
52.21% we have collected. And we're just over halfway through the year. And that is .11% less than last year. And that .11% equates to $41,272. The next item is the children's summer reading program at the library. We had 64, or there were 64 libraries who participated. And the Tiverton Library came in at number seven with the children completing the reading program.
Congratulations from the library.
That's a good thing. I don't know if I need to mention this, but I will. The fire department members are going to be wearing pink shirts, as you've already seen, demonstrated this evening.
Why, is that something different, Chief?
It's not your regular outfit?
They're going to be wearing pink for the next couple of weeks in recognition of breast cancer awareness. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council announcements, comments, and questions? Oh, distribution of five-year capital plan, actuarial report, and employee handbook.
Yes, you have the books in your packets here. The five-year plan is a draft at this point. It'll become more final once we get department budgets and see what we'll be able to fit in. But going into it, this is my recommendation. There's only one item that may be added to it at this point, added to the draft, is anything from recreation in terms of a major expenditure. We have gone through this. I've sat with the town heads. We've come to conclusion. I sat with the treasurer to determine which items are looking, we're looking to finance and the amount of that payment. So, I'm going to leave it up to the council. If you want to review it in detail before any budget meetings. And when you do, you can let me know, and we'll do it.
Just a quick question on the capital improvement plan. Is there ever a public hearing on the capital improvement plan? I know some other towns do public hearings.
We have never done it. Yeah, there's nothing to prohibit us, but we've never done it.
In a way, it's, there's a public hearing for the budget and when we put it in that capital plan for that year, then it becomes a public hearing on why we need, you know what I mean?
Maybe like suggestions from the public of things we need, or?
This is a five-year plan, so it could get feedback from the public on the five years versus, we're only looking at the budget committee at one-year snapshot. So, it's just a suggestion.
Might not be a bad idea to talk about it at a meeting and somehow, I mean... Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to formally take action.
Some people may think something that we propose in the fifth year should be in the first year. Yeah, now that you said it.
Not a bad idea.
Mr. President, you also need to refer to the, I mean, when you're ready to adopt it, when you're dealing with it, you need to refer to the planning board. They review the capital improvement plan for consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Really?
Yes.
They're supposed to.
Well, we haven't really had a capital improvement plan for a while, do we? But yes, they are.
So, they review it and give us their comments?
That's correct. It's advisory to the council as far as consistency with the comprehensive plan.
But the scope is defined by consistency with the capital. I mean, with the comprehensive plan.
That's correct. It's not a wide-open review about whether they think a ladder truck is better than a pumper truck or not. It's how does it fit consistent with the comprehensive plan?
That makes more sense.
I would support a public kind of process to vet a five-year plan.
I think it's just more information. I think it's good. Thanks, Joan. Great idea.
Do you want me to forward this to the planning board at this point?
No.
No.
Can we, do we need to make a motion to have a public input session on it?
You need to finalize before you send it to the planning board.
I would think we'd have, but I would think we'd have the planning board review it before we do.
If we change this thing.
You need to send to the planning board what your final draft of it is.
Not give it to them first, then?
It doesn't make sense to send yet.
If I may? Based on the process and other committees, I think that the idea is the administrator is getting it to you now. So, you have a chance to look at it, review. I would anticipate another meeting where the council would be giving us their feedback to the administrator about the issues. And you're working back and forth. And that might well be our next workshop meeting to go over it, go back and forth. Then, when you've got some consistency, some consistent goals between the council and the administrator, that's the time that I think you would put it out for a public hearing, if you want to. And also, that's the time to send it to the planning board. But I don't think before the council's even seen it and had a chance to look at it, they want to be...
Do we mean the budget committee?
No. It's a planning document, so we have to, it has to pass the test of reasonableness that's set forth in the comprehensive plan. That it's, you know, that it follows in line with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan.
The budget committee will be involved, obviously, because they'll have to figure in the...
I just did it to be part of our workshop, so they'll be there.
Yeah. So, this will be on our agenda for the next...
Do you want a workshop?
No, no, I think while we review it, then we'll have our workshop. And then send it to the planning board. That's what I was thinking. Because then we could have, because we could have the workshop and the hearing at the same time. Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, the workshop and the public hearing at the same time. Okay, council announcements, comments, and questions?
Still more stuff on that.
Keep rushing you tonight, Jim.
You have in your package the actuarial report for the police pension. And we have some good news. The funding status has increased from 50.6% to 54.8%. And this is prior to our contribution, our annual contribution of $825,000. And the requirement for this year is $544,000. So, we will, in essence, be contributing $280,000 more than required. And I'm thinking that if all goes the same and our assets produce somewhere near what they produced this year, which was 9.8%, that we could possibly be out of critical status next year. Or close to it. Everything has to fall in place, though. I want to add that. So, you have it there for your review and comments. If you want to speak about it in another meeting, just let me know.
I have a question. This first chart here, the, where you, the numbers you just essentially spoke about. This change in asset value, which is nine and eight-tenths of a percent, does that include any contributions from prior year? Like, does it include? Is that the growth of the asset clean? Or is that growth plus whatever we put in in 2012?
No, that's all-inclusive.
And that's, and that includes also the withdrawals from paying out pensions, right?
Yes.
So, at the end of the day, we made 9.8%, shook everything out, based on our contributions and the increase in asset value and the payout. Do you know the numbers that would get us there? What did we pay out and what did we put in? It's baked into this number. I'm sure it's in here, but...
They're in here.
I didn't. So, in, it's about $715,000 that we paid out.
Does it make sense to put this on a subsequent agenda so that...
I don't think, no, I'm just trying to understand for my own. The two numbers I need are what the pension cost us, which was $714,000, and what we put into the pension, which was something between 600 and 800, I presume.
If you go to page nine, it shows the asset value at the beginning of 2012, fiscal year 2012. Member contributions of $143,000. Town contributions of $700,000. Investment income of $661,000. And benefits paid, $734,000.
Okay.
So, there seems to be a discrepancy, then? Because if here on page nine, A2 employer contribution, say, $700,000, but then on the cover page, our contribution amount is listed as 825?
Going forward.
No.
That's moving.
This year's contribution.
Okay, thank you.
Page nine's, the date of this value is July 1st, 2012?
No, 2013.
At the bottom. So, you add the market value and then, oh, okay, yeah.
On page?
Page nine. We go from where we were in 2012, put in, take out, and then where we were in 2013.
Right. July 1st is the date of the evaluation.
Okay. That's all I need.
And our contribution of $825,000 was subsequent to that July 1st, 2013 date.
Okay. So, the $700,000 represents employer contributions between July 1/12 and July 1/13.
Correct.
And the 825 represents what we're paying July 1/13, in theory, to July 1/14.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that contribution has already been made.
Do we make that in one lump sum, or do we do it? Is that required?
No. We can make the payments however we wish. But putting it in early
Gives us more...
Gives us more of an advantage as far as investment income.
Obviously, this will go on future agenda to discuss in total. I think, didn't we have them come? Didn't we have them a couple of years ago coming?
Yeah.
Yes, I think we did a couple of years ago.
Yeah, maybe it's time that we have them come in again.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, yeah. He'll talk to them and see when they're available to come in. And distribution of employee handbook? I love handbooks.
It's pretty voluminous. It's being passed out through your review so that you can formulate any questions or comments. And then, when you've had sufficient time, if you let me know, I will put it back on the agenda so that we can receive your comments.
Jim, just to kind of color how I approach this. It sounds like paychecks as a third-party vendor. This feels like it's somewhat templated. And that municipalities kind of go in and modify what might be a set of kind of core templated content to suit the particulars of the municipality. Is that correct?
That's correct. And when you look at it, you'll see references to our union contracts for benefits purposes.
Sure. Yeah, and happy to spend time kind of going through this with a finer-tooth comb, I guess. On the surface, it felt pretty dry. And it's always referred to as this municipality or the municipality, and not the town of Tiverton or anything like that. Just, again...
It started out generic. It was a template from paychecks.
Yep.
And we made certain modifications to it and added some individualism to it.
Okay.
Yes, Chief?
Mr. President, and Mr. Goncalo, the department, in part of its accreditation program, has revised and renewed all the department rules and regulations, which I supplied, Mr. Goncalo, a copy of that handbook. I don't know about the fire department. They may also have a separate handbook, or employee guide, that is what we base it on. So, I don't want two booklets to conflict and possibly affect a grievance or some type of arbitration because they have conflicting language. So, that may be considered as well.
And we will consider that, but I think there's a difference. Yours is more of an internal type. This is generic for the entire town. There should be no conflict, but we should.
Yeah, they should be both reviewed to make sure that, you know, you don't have a rule that says, you know, they can, you know, bungee jump off the roof on Fridays, and it's prohibited everywhere else.
That's just fine, I'm going to do that. Just a thought. Thank you.
Okay, and Chief Lloyd, do you have one also?
Just some internal documents.
Okay, thank you.
I do sort of echo Bill's comments. Just, there's a section in here about, you know, life-threatening illnesses, and it says, "Our municipality is committed to supporting each employee's efforts to continue their normal pursuits, including working while life-threatening." So, a little softness when you're saying, you know, "I know you're, you've got a life-threatening illness, but we're here to help." And it's kind of canned and a little cold. So, I agree.
Yeah, I think with a fairly simple search and replace function in Microsoft Word, that could be... could be handled, but, you know, that's maybe my softer side coming out.
If I may?
I, I know exactly what you're gonna say, go ahead.
Okay, we don't have a personnel director, you don't have the staff here. So that's why we're using a canned version. It is being, it is being modified, but part of it is, the deal with it is that as they come up, as new federal laws change and whatnot, they will provide us updates on that. And their stuff will just come with the municipality, so we don't have to re-change everything and worry about the changes. That, that's part of the reason behind it.
And in addition to that, as, as Mr. Tight says, they will support this the way we have it. But if we start to institute some other items, like if we were to institute the police manual, they would not support that. We'd be on our own.
They just have to make sure they don't contradict.
Right, that's, and.
We, we can have something in the, in the, in the resolution, when this is first adopted, we can reference the police and fire documents as being separated, not being repealed by this. But that would be our document rather than dealing with, it'd be one manual.
Can we, can we not, like, stick a two-pager in the front of this thing that's our own? Okay. All right.
Exactly.
Yeah, all right.
Anything else, Jim?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay, now, council announcements, comments, and questions.
I have one item. The Tiverton Senior Center knitting and quilting volunteers is holding their annual handcraft sale this Saturday and Sunday, November 2nd and November 3rd, from 9:00 to 3:00 at Saconic Bay Manor on Main Road. They have wonderful, wonderful handcrafted items. This scarf I'm wearing is from last year's sale, but they do a great job. I'm advertising. They do a great job. They have adult sweaters, Afghans quilts, children's pillows, children's sweaters, hats, gloves, bibs, adult bibs, which I do have one, and it has come in very handy. I highly recommend it. It saves on, on the front of your shirts. All the profits from these sales, from last year's quilting sales, provided for three scholarships of 2,000 each and three Star Kids. All, this is donated to charity. The volunteers receive no money for this. After the, this is their first sale on November 2nd and 3rd. They do have a second sale in December. After the last sale of the year, they give the remaining items that they have to charities. So they do a great job. Please stop by. This Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 to 3:00, Saconic Bay Manor, they do an excellent job. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. Anyone else?
Just real quickly, I just, I wanted to just publicly thank everyone who was involved in Saturday's groundbreaking of the library. I know many of us were there, kind of battling the, what was probably the coldest day of the year thus far, but I think it was a great event, well-attended, well-organized, and it's exciting to kind of turn the page on this new chapter here. So, thank you.
Well, that reminds me of a different appreciation, the volunteer appreciation night. We'd like to thank Janice Gomes and Nancy Mello for putting on a wonderful spread, just since the volunteers had a great time. I know I had a great time, and we'll hopefully do it again next year.
Job well done.
We should provide bibs, yeah, that'd be good. Only kidding, only kidding, but please, get the bib.
Thank you. Anything else? Town Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of updates. First of all, on the Saconet Bridge, Toll Bridge litigation, there's nothing much happening in court at the moment. The judge heard a relatively small motion from the town of Portsmouth to amend the complaint, to add in a further count about the, the maintenance of the money for the bridge not being used on other bridges, and he denied that motion. That was the only action he took, was to deny that motion to amend the complaint, but his language was such, like, "We don't know what's gonna happen, the General Assembly's got a committee out there, we don't know what's gonna happen for now, so everything's speculative at this point." So I don't know that he will do anything. He has not scheduled the motions of the town of Tiverton, together with the town of Bristol, to intervene, but since we've been there anyway, we haven't been pressing to have it scheduled. I do anticipate that there will be further filing, perhaps a motion for summary judgment, things like that, from the towns. We will push that sometime in the next month or two, but it probably won't get heard until after the new year, I would think, the way things are going. But we are, we are still working on it, I want you to know, behind the scenes. Along with that was the thought that it would be good to have a meeting with the town councils, that the three councils, Bristol, Tiverton, and Portsmouth, might meet together to discuss this. And if you're amenable to it, I'll work with the clerk to try to see about, we have scheduled, interestingly enough, you and Portsmouth have the same meeting night schedule, the second and fourth Mondays. But I don't think, we need to pick, we therefore need another time off there, but perhaps maybe a first or a third Monday we could find that would be there. But I assume that you would be interested in doing that.
Consensus of the council, yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And I, I thought of a neutral location, if we could, you know, rent the old Vista Jubilee and meet right in the middle of the water there, but I assume you wouldn't mind meeting, meeting in Portsmouth or meeting in some other location, depending where you want.
Wait a minute, we have to pay the toll to go over there.
Yes.
No, we can go the long way around and take them on.
We'll get, right, well, the Bristol, and if Bristol's coming too, we'll see if we can get you an escort through Bristol, how's that? So you won't get caught up in the traffic for the Mount Hope, for the bridge.
Either that or we carpool, so we only pay once, well, twice, return trip.
Next item is Bay Street contamination, I'll give you a little update on that. And we like to think that that's gone away, but it hasn't. All the good news is, the good news is we're definitely working towards closure on that. Pun intended, I guess. The excavation's been proceeding all spring and summer and into the fall with Bob, Bob Hoffman in charge of it. They're rushing to try to get the rest of it done by the end of the season. And most of the cleanup excavation work should be done by the end of November, assuming the weather holds for another month. And at that point, over the winter time, my office will be working with Bob to work on the closure reports. I'm trying to think, I do think it was actually, the, the number of data points that Bob has as far as the test points, the wells, and at what depth and whatnot, are, I, I thought it was, I, I, it's in the hundreds of thousands at least. It might actually be over a million separate data points. So he's gonna plot all that. The, it's gonna be done block by block is the plan, so that we would be releasing the moratorium and, you know, a lot of these properties are gonna have environmental land use restrictions, but it would be done on a block-by-block basis. And our goal is to have this all done by March 31st of 2014. I don't know if we're gonna get that or not, but that's the goal that we're gonna work to try to do. And then he would be, you know, having, dealing with leftover issues, leftover cleanup spots, hotspots, and issues like that in next spring. But they're already working on things like bringing landscaping and sod and stuff back in now that they'll be doing over the next month. So as long as we don't get a real early snowstorm or, or a warm-up and a whole batch of rain, if we don't have either of those, they should be able to complete their, most of the work before the end of the month. Any, any questions on that? And then the final thing is just informing you of a lawsuit. We've got another suit in federal court. Provided with a copy of the, it's actually a third-party complaint, deals with a house that was being built, there was a fire. The insurance company, Fireman's Fund Insurance Company, is paying on the claim, and then they turned around and sued the contractor who built the house. And now the contractor has turned around and sued the town, sued our building official in his official capacity for, for failing to, failing to recognize what he, the contractor, did improperly. That's the gist of it. I know I'm putting a slant on it, but that's how I feel about it. We have sent this to the inter-local trust, and they have assigned defense counsel to it. So we will vigorously defend it.
Okay, town clerk?
I don't have anything, thank you.
She's been busy.
I'm sorry?
Pursuant to a Rhode Island general laws, I move that we go into a closed executive session pursuant to a Rhode Island general laws, Chapter 42, Section 46, 5A1, Ray Personnel Performance, James C. Goncalo, town administrator, notice given.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor? Okay, before you go on, Jim, you received notice?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
And remain, remain in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, Chapter 42, Section 46, 5A2, Ray Town Solicitor Litigation Report.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
And remain in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island law, Chapter 42, Section 46, 5A4, Ray Town Solicitor Investigative Proceedings Procedure.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor?